Says my connection is limited. All right, you're up. Here we go.
Fantastic.
Hi, good evening, good evening, residents of Litchfield. Welcome to the June 10th school board meeting. I'd like to start with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The budget committee never sounds like that. Review and revisions?
Nope.
Summary of non-public actions from May 27, 2015. Mr. Barker made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of May 13, 2015, as written. Mrs. Quintana, second. Motion carried, 302. Mr. York, Ms. Lepore abstaining. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the resignation of Ashley Del Greco, CHS math teacher. Ms. Lepore, second. Motion carried, 500. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the resignation of Matthew Carley, CHS special education teacher. Ms. Lepore, second. Motion carried, 500. Mr. Burke made a motion, oops, to accept the resignation of John Patterson, CH athletic director. Ms. Lepore, second. Motion carried, 500. We have acceptance of a donation.
In the board packet is a donation from Deb Briggs of Technology Equipment. Because of the value of it, it will have to come to a hearing. It's from NetScout, and the hearing would be at the next school board meeting. And I think we also have the hearing on the trophy case as well at the same time. So we'd have both of those on the agenda, both hearings for the next school board meeting. The equipment is up to 50 laptops from NetScout where Ms. Briggs works. The majority of the computers are Pentium i7s with four, minimum of four gigs of RAM and 500 gig hard drives. So I spoke with IT Director Jason Pelletier, who said that we would be more than happy to accept all of those, and he was going to contact Ms. Briggs to see what the others were and how many of them we would accept. But our hope is to accept all of those.
Next approval of draft minutes from 5:27:15.
Maggie Martin to approve them.
Second.
Further discussion? Call those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. I skipped over correspondence. I believe I just pulled it back up. Was it just one, Derek?
Oh, I see.
I remember seeing this one from John and Donna Curtin. More or less commending the job that was done at Campbell High School with their student. How much of a better student he is.
Did the board get that one? Because I don't see it.
I didn't get that one.
The board got it.
Yeah, maybe I just received it. No, came over to System Administration.
What date?
June 3rd.
I don't have it.
P. 40?
Or 2nd, yep. I believe that was the only one. And I'd already sent that to Michelle, so that'll be in the minutes also. Is there any other correspondence anyone have?
Hold on a second, I thought there was. Wasn't there one on the 27th?
Maybe.
Or was that the one about, did we, we've met since?
That was a dress code, we did that day.
Yeah. So I think that was the only one. All right. No one has anything else, but that will go to community forum. Anyone? No. Bring us the superintendent's comments.
None. For the chief.
And school board comments.
I would just like to comment about the, the spring concert that happened last week, I think it was. Again, amazing, wonderful, just incredible. I can't get over how talented the kids are and how much work I know that you've done with all of the kids, Phil. It's just, it's just such an incredible thing. I know it's a, it's a big event where mostly parents are coming to it, but really I would invite members of the community to come out and, and see these concerts if they can. They're, the kids are wonderful. You would be so, maybe you would, maybe you wouldn't be so amazed at how talented they are, but it's just really, the music is great, the kids are just spectacular. So I'd just like to commend the music teachers, the music department, and all of the kids that played in that concert. There's a huge amount of kids that are in the music program, and it's wonderful to see that.
And I was there for the middle school one, so again, it was a great, great night. However, I will ask the business administration, is there a problem with the air conditioning in the auditorium?
Not that I'm aware of.
No? Well, you should, we should check school too, because it's like 80 degrees in that place.
Too many bars.
My understanding is that they've been trying to get it fixed for a year, so if we could check on that, because it was very warm in that room.
I have a quick comment. I had a perk meeting last week, and I've actually been to the, to the high school anyway three or four times in the last two weeks, and I'll come at like three or four for like a perk meeting or another meeting with a staff member or something, and I can't get in the building. So that's a problem. There was also three or four members of perk that couldn't get in from, I believe it was the GMS representations, they couldn't get in. So they were like a half an hour away from the meeting because their badges wouldn't let them in. So I don't know when we started locking the building down, but it's.
Your badge should work, and we can set any of the perk committee members to.
I guess, why are we all of a sudden locking everything down?
That was, the decision of the board policy was passed back in the fall. PCAB, I think.
I think we talked about locking it down after school hours.
That's been the procedure for quite some time. If there's no activity going on in the building, the custodial staff has, I think, I can't address the specifics on the other two schools, like I tell you, here at CHS, they leave it open until 3:00. And then they do lock the doors if there's no one assigned in the building.
It used to be the opposite, where it was locked when the students were here, but then after school was unlocked, because I've, I've done perk for three years, I've never had a problem getting into the building before.
Well, I couldn't get in today for school board, I knocked on the door, somebody was walking by and they let me in.
The office staff's gone at 3:00, so you can't get in. You try and call someone, and they don't get reception, so you're literally stuck up there until someone comes.
Your badge should work, though.
It does now, it's for some reason that the perk day didn't work, but.
So if it's 3:00 in the afternoon, the teachers can't get in?
No, even like I said, the GMS teachers, like Mrs. Doucette and I think that's why they couldn't get in.
There must have been something wrong with the system, though. They, they should have accessed it, there's no reason for them not having access to the building.
Teachers should be able to get in.
Of course.
Up until, I think the board said 11:00 or 10:00. They should be, their, their card should get them into the building.
Right, because we had discussions as far as sports, we've set the time as far as late, and if the kid forgets his sneakers, then he's out of luck.
But to leave the doors open with no supervision except custodians is not what you want to be doing.
No, not, not unlocked.
No, but the, the, that's the, the, that was the benefit of the proximity, that all, all staff would have access to the building, I believe, until 11:00 at night.
Correct.
When the custodial staff is locking the building down.
Yeah. Is that something you can look into, Frank?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it sounds like there was something wrong with the proximity of the software, maybe that.
And the other comment, I'm sorry, Jackson, I'll start.
Well, I, I think that if there's, if there's people that need the access to the building for various committees, then whoever is the chair in this case, it would be Dr. Hian, needed to make sure that those people have the proper access to the buildings for whatever school people are moving to. That should never be a, that should never be a, an issue.
I understand why all staff couldn't have access to the building. Like the same thing, Mrs. Late was here to set up for the LMS concert, I just happened to be standing in the hallway, and she couldn't get in. So, waiting to let her in. Mrs. Late, Carolyn.
Okay.
This was, you were, you were standing with me, I think, I was talking to you when it happened.
And I think rationale is, is access to the building, so someone who works in one building has access to that building till 11:00 at night. But, and we went through the same thing in the fall with, with coaches, and, and, you know, had, had a quick conversation with Coach Patterson, and they asked for extended hours, gave us a list of people that they need the hours. So there's a process in place to address it. But we'll, we'll address it with all the, the committee folks.
The other comment I had, and I'm not sure exactly what the right term was, what was it? It was last week. Janine, you were there also? The awards.
Thursday morning?
Thursday morning.
The CHS awards.
But, I mean, it's impressive you talk about the music being, I mean, I was pretty impressed as far as the amount of students and the accolades, and, you know, when they called for all the students, it went to 3.75, and then with straight A's, I mean, it was quite a bit of the audience came out of the bleachers and onto the floor, so it was pretty nice to see.
They should also recognize the kids who got 3.92, because they weren't, I know that there's a special evening for them, but I think that at that ceremony, they should also be called up as well, because I think that's, that's quite ingenious.
I had a feeling all those students were called up at some point in time, because they forced that morning for some award. Do we have anything updated on the one-to-one pilot?
Yep. Mr. Perez has been chairing the committee, and he's crafted a letter to be sent out to the parents of the 52 students who requested participation in the, the one-to-one pilot. Next Thursday, February 18th, is the LMS awards here in the high school, and so we're going to try and offer about a one-hour information session for those parents and students at the library at about 5:30. Andrew Angie is putting together a PowerPoint, actually has put together and has circulated it to the, the members of the committee for feedback. The IT Director has ordered 10 of the Samsung Chromebooks, those should be in Monday or Tuesday of next week, so we'll have those for people to look at. Director Callanan will be there to talk about, you know, the course selection and scheduling, and Director Pelletier will be there to talk about purchasing and lease options.
Can I ask a question? How many, how many students do we have coming in to do that? That are going to use the one-to-one computing?
52. Who, who said they were interested when they signed up for schedules?
Okay. So would they be able to use these laptops that, that Debbie Briggs mentioned in her email? The Dell laptops, the email, the email that we discussed at the beginning of this meeting?
No, they'll be in the notebooks.
They need to have those, okay.
Can we get the PowerPoint emailed to us as a school board member?
Once we get a final version.
That's fine.
Contract was signed and executed. We are waiting for the date for the folks from Infinite Campus to be here to set up a schedule and do the first round of PD with folks. We have interviews for the database administrator position hopefully next week, with someone being hired either by July 1st or very shortly thereafter.
Committee reports? Budget committee hasn't met.
The perk committee met, and the approved materials are, are in the, the package. They were all approved unanimously by the perk committee. They were all good materials. I especially liked the invisions math for the, is for the GMS, and then both social studies, the LMS, were, were pretty good as well. I liked the, the geography and the social studies ones, it wasn't just about jargon and social studies, but in tech economics and stuff like that, it was, it looked like a really good resource.
Was Nikki at the meeting too?
No, she wasn't.
She had any input on it? And do you know when Julia needs to vote on these?
She did not say. Do you know, Dr. Cochran?
I'm sorry?
Do you know when, if she needs to vote on these, sooner or?
Ah, sooner. Going to wait till our next meeting, so we'll have a little time to like look over?
When's our next meeting?
24th.
I think we're, we're, we're hoping that we can order teachers' versions and have teachers' versions in, in folks' hands before the end of the school year, so they'll be able to have those over the summer, which will be helpful for them for, for preparation. Dr. Hian couldn't be here tonight, but that was her intent.
I know, looking through them also, Derek, they all got, I mean, excellent reviews.
Yeah, they were, they were really good, I liked them. Like I said, especially the social studies ones, they were just, the books were good, they were engaging, lots of colorful pictures, lots of different topics. Like I said, I was surprised at the economics and like the, the study stuff, but it was, the way they described it and stuff was cool. The study sync was English Language Arts, and it came with a strong technology component, so you could read about the article, and then there was a link to the website, we could learn more about the, the subject and stuff.
I noticed that in, in, in all the reports, it was just the, you know, the standard report, there wasn't any bervage, bervage from teachers or the, or the group that was, that reviewed it. It was just, you know, the, the form with the numbers, and then, you know, 10 sentences, 10 words at the end of, "We need to do it now because we need to order the books" type of reasons, which is, again, not following what the process that the school board put in place. So while I understand, and actually spent, you know, about 45 minutes, again, here today reviewing these, while I believe that all of them make good sense, they surely don't follow our process again. So either our process is flawed, which means that bringing these, this process to us at the end of the year is a flawed process, because it doesn't allow the board the opportunity to review these books and make sure they're perfectly fine. I don't have any reason to believe they won't, or they weren't, but then again, I haven't seen any hard copy of these books, at least at the last meeting, there were a few hard copies around, but we didn't have any, much, a lot of time to look at them. So again, we're left at the process of not what we want out of approving our curriculum and our things out of perk, and so.
We do have one advantage, this time out, at least we have a budget. The school board member was.
That's true. At the last one, we had no, but no representation at the last one. And so I, I think that before school starts in the fall, that the administration needs to look at the perk process and come to us in September with a new plan, which allows the board to follow their processes that they put in place.
I think in terms of the steps of the process, I think it's, it's quite thorough. I think the difficulty is that the timelines have been very tight, you know, much more frequently than, than everybody would like. So in terms of, of the process and the feedback, you know, I, I think that procedurality's been fine, but I do agree with you that, that the timelines have meant that the board has not had the ability to spend as much time in review as, as they might like.
I mean, how many, how many, how often does perk meet? Once a quarter?
Once a month.
Once a month.
Yeah.
So I mean.
But there was a lot of materials, you should, you should see the materials.
I'm just, but is all of this information basically just come to perk in the last 60 days, 30 days?
The first, the first time I saw these ones, yeah, was last month.
So I guess my question is, why is it taking?
The grade level teams meet first, though. Like the, the grade six will team will get together, review the different components, and they bring the ones they recommend to perk in the perk season. So I don't see the other ones.
So is it that their, the process of the evaluation by the, by the teachers' group is not, is much longer, or is that, the, the process of weeding through this takes a full year?
No. I've not been involved with the perk process, that's completely Dr. Hian, but we do, I mean, teachers really care about resources, and they want to get the resources they believe best, meet the students' needs. And I think teachers take it seriously and, and do a good job of it. I think from, from a time perspective, Dr. Hian's job is very broad and deep, she is .8, and, and that, you know, creates a, a lot of the issues. We have a lot of, of external mandates this year that we've been dealing with, the relative of, of, of smarter balance took a huge amount of time on the part of everybody from administration, teachers, paras, all, all the way through the district. And, you know, the, the teacher evaluation piece is essentially mandated by the NHDOE that needs to be in, moving to a four-point rubric, needs to be in place for the fall. So those are two things that are pretty labor-intensive, on top of doing the curriculum writing and then trying to get resources. We're also mandated, mandated by the state to write K to A competencies this year, and so working across that many groups, trying to get all that worked on, it, it has been burdensome this year, I'll, I'll be quite honest with you.
Derek, when, when, say like grade six comes to you with like social studies, they come to you with just one book? Yeah, they picked, they picked a book beforehand, they vet two or three books. So they, they spend the time as far as going through like, who knows how many different books, and then they make their selection, then they present at the perk? Yeah, exactly. By the time we see it, there's a bunch of teachers that have already approved it.
So the grade level, they may have had it for several, several months, going through different.
But how much, if you didn't see this, so you saw this, what, a week ago at the meeting?
Yeah.
So how does, how does the perk committee then?
A lot of times you send stuff, a lot of times, I didn't see the actual textbook the last week. They send the information ahead of time, you review and stuff like that, read about, yeah. And then you sit down, she actually goes through books.
So at that meeting, you at least saw the textbook?
Yes, I saw the textbook, I sat through and looked at a lot of them. But I mean, especially when I see a math one, I, I sit down and dig through it. Elementary ones I like, especially like, because my kids are that great, so I can actually sit through and go through them and see what they're learning, prepared to learn now, see how the concepts are taught and stuff like that. And I like this book better than I have the ones they have today, actually.
I mean, our whole idea behind streamlining this process was that the board representation in the process with perk was, so that we didn't have to spend 30 minutes going through each one of these books at a school board meeting, but that the process would be enough that we would have a presentation, and then we could take a vote at our next meeting. That was sort of the whole broad scope of that process, was that, so we could do a consent agenda process. And now, granted, the board also had entrusted that the representation of the board member, or board members in this case, was that they would also be very active, and they would be the eyes and ears of the board in, in that aspect, and that a timely fashion would occur. I don't think we're hitting the timely fashion very well.
I would agree. And again, Dr. Hian was unable to come tonight for personal reasons, but.
Would you prefer to wait two weeks and approve it then?
Well, you know, well, you know how I felt from the last vote. So there's more than enough of you guys to, to charge forth through the process as we did two weeks ago and, and move them forward. You know, I will, I will vote no, but, but it's not because I disagree with any of what, what you have here, it's just, it's, you know, we have a process, and we have a, a lot of different processes that are creating a lot of heartache and things, you know, getting in the building and things like that. If we create a process that is too rigorous and is creating heartache, then we need to readdress it as a board and, and take it under, under advisement to, to change the process. But, but until we do, we still have to try to follow that, follow the process as best we can. Now, you know, we have a rule that says we can break our own rules, so, you know, our policy that says we can pretty much vote on this, but, but, you know, if, if, if the board wants it to be unanimous, then.
That's the kind of envision that I, I can't believe they're waiting two weeks to vote on this and give us a little time to at least digest the information that's given to us.
There's not a lot of information, and based on the PDFs, there's no reason to digest it. There's, there's really nothing, the, the PDFs has, have no information, the question, the, how well they have booked.
It would be nice if the board saw the materials, though, for passing.
At the same thing, at least see the books. What I was going to say is, if we wait, if we do wait two weeks to at least see the material, then I'm certain that she can get the teacher books in the teacher's hands, even though it's out of school.
Well, we meet on the 24th. School is out.
Yep.
I don't know how many more days after that the, the teachers are, are working, but schools are out.
I know, I don't know which ones, she was planning on ordering immediately. Some of these she wasn't planning on ordering immediately. She wanted them approved, though, in case she had budget left, she could have ordered them, but she's not positive she has budget for all these, is what she told the perk committee.
So I don't, I don't know if, if we wait till the 24th, then, then the books will be in, and whether or not they get in teacher's hands before they come back at the end of August will just be that, that process. They'll just be, they'll be here, and if the teachers make it in, they, they can, if not, then they, they see them in August.
Are these books that the teachers will be using in the fall?
I believe they are.
The math ones, definitely.
And that, I, and, and in consideration of your comments, and I agree with you, John, to a point, I think where we have teachers who have carefully selected these texts, we have a perk committee who has gone through them, frankly, I trust the teachers, I trust the, the perk committee. If they feel that these books are, are the books for their classes, then, then I'm comfortable with voting on it now. I mean, I agree with you, with looking at the PDFs, there's not a lot of information. I would love to be able to look at them, but right now, under the circumstances today, we don't really have an opportunity to look at them and vote on it and get them to the teachers before the teachers leave school. So personally, I would prefer to have the teachers get them in their hands as early as possible, so that they can take a look at what it is they're going to be teaching from in the fall. I think that makes more sense, and I think that's more important to me right now than following the process that we have in place, so.
Are the books in our office? Do we still get them?
I do not know.
Is our office locked?
Yes, but I have the key.
Here's a question, I mean, I don't know if you know, Dr. Cochran, once you order the materials, how long it takes to get them?
Don't know. Dr. Hian's usually in pretty good touch with the, with the vendors. She had indicated to me that she wanted to have these here by the end of the school year.
So I'm, I'm moved that we accept the perk recommendations for all of them.
You do it with the understanding that we can see the materials next week? I'm sorry, our next meeting? If we go ahead with the votes, then we can always vote against it again, right?
You could. We were already bottom at that point, though.
Just for the teachers. Just for the teachers.
Well, I, you know, it's one of those things that I imagine when she negotiates, the best value is going to be when you buy all of what you need instead of piecemealing it. I mean, that's when you're going to get your, your best value. So if the decision here is to move forward, which, which, you know.
I'd still like to see the materials at our next meeting.
So we have a motion and a second.
Further discussion? Opposed in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstain. Three ones out.
We'll run finished business. At the last meeting, Mr. York asked that we break up the finished products of the groups working on the teacher evaluation rubrics into groups, so the board had more time to peruse them, and as a result, I will be sending out some of the, the smaller groups, so librarians, we have three librarians, you know, that's a pretty small group, so they should have all have had impact, uh, input, but we'll send them out to teachers for final comment and back in. So we will be able to hopefully have the, the first set of those ready for the next board meeting, if not after that. But as background information before that, I thought I would provide you with the two sections of the professional educator evaluation plan. This is approved by the board in May of 2010. The first document pages 1 through 18 goes over the, the plan, the purpose, talks about annual contract status. Now, it refers to annual contract status, year 1, 2, 3, the law has changed, it's now five years for new teachers to move to continuing contract status. Three years if they have already had a continuing contract status in another district. So we have to bring that up to date to reflect the law. But it basically outlines, outlines the procedures of the goal and the outcomes, talks about the SMART goals, reflecting on personal goals. It should be tied fairly closely to teacher recertification, because teacher recertification comes at the, at the, in sync with the evaluation year. If you look at, by the time we get to page eight, you've got the four major areas of the Danielson rubrics, the principles and planning and preparation, rather, and the, the general principles of that, the classroom environment, and then. general principles of that, the classroom environment, and then on to instruction, and then professional responsibilities. And those are listed for the various categories to be assessed. And if you go to the second document, you will actually see the rubrics themselves. Oh, that's another eighty-six pages. The first part goes into, again, is again procedural, looks at some of the forms, guiding questions, what sources of evidence to look at, pre-conference discussion topics, if it's a formal observation, and then the teacher observation reports, and post-conference discussion topics, the final summative evaluation, usually multiple observations, and then a final summative, which is a compilation of all of the other information. And then information about assistant plans for continuing contract teachers. And then on page twenty-one of that document starts the teacher actual rubric, so the previous document had the criteria. If you note, there are three categories, unsatisfactory, needs improvement, and proficient. Danielson actually wrote four categories, as I mentioned before, and the, what happened in the creation of these was that the fourth rubric of four was moved up and referred to as the master teacher plans and so on. So the language is there for all four levels, but teachers could only score it unsatisfactory, needs improvement, or proficient. And it goes through the various categories that are, that are involved with those rubrics.
The appendancy there where it sets the goals and the steps and stuff like that?
Mm-hmm.
Are those specific teacher goals, are those school goals, the department goals? Where do those goals come from?
They should be teacher-specific goals, but they should be related usually to school goals.
So at one, say in the high school, we have four math teachers, do all four math teachers have the same goals, are they specific to their courses?
No, not necessarily.
Okay. That's set by the principal, or together?
That, that should primarily be driven, you know, by, by the teacher and then have some conversations with, with administration as to why these goals make sense and so on.
So, does that mean that there's not a, a formal process of review of everybody's evaluation on an annual basis?
I'm not sure.
Meaning, I mean, Derek says, is that something that's set by the principal? Normally, an evaluation or goals that are set by a, for an employee would be set by the employee supervisor or directed, these are the goals for this department and whatever, everybody has the same goals at that point. So they are going to be, or they are, they are going to be different standards depending on what the teacher's load is or experience or things like that. I mean, there should be different expectations depending on the, I would imagine, depending on the experience of the teacher and things like that. Would that not be something that is, that is sort of in place by August when they come back, that is something that is, you know, discussed at the end of June, put in place over the summer, then presented back to the employee and agreed upon between administration of the school and the specific teacher?
It needs to be in place fairly quickly because I think the first observation is due October fifteenth.
Well, no, I understand that, but I'm just saying, is not our process that that we had, that we're just, that I just mentioned, where we've been doing a, a setting goals, objectives, or plans, you know, to improve, for improvement or whatever? Aren't we not setting those in May and June as we wind down the school year? And then presenting them back to the teachers when they come back as, they should be about ninety-five percent agreed upon, it's just a matter of formatting them and getting them in the, into the right document, and then agreed upon with a, with a signature when they come back for their three days?
I can't comment on the timelines. Procedurally, this, this should be, in most cases, driven in a very significant way by the teacher and conversations about where they are, what things they want to spend their time on, whether it be on, you know, increased use of technology or providing students with more feedback, or, so what are the areas of growth goal?
Well, growth goals are not, are not the same as, which could be part of an evaluation. I would, I would imagine that a teacher would say, you know, I'd like to see some growth or some opportunities to improve my skills in X. And, and, you know, the, the evaluator or the administration in this place would say, well, I would, I understand that, but we see a weakness here, or we see some, you know, based on what's coming down as a broader picture, we would like to see your, a concentration in this area because it's what is better for the district or better for the, the students in the school. With the idea that, yes, you wanna try to improve the teacher in areas that they want to, but at the same time, our responsibility is, is to students in the district in that, in that sense, and getting the teachers in a position that they can best improve the learning process for the kids. If it's, if the whole review and that whole process is left to the teacher, who's, who's actually reviewing that when it's turned in and making sure that the goals or the objectives or the, or the plan is, one, agreed upon by the administration, and, two, followed during that year with benchmarks and goals to make sure that at the end of that year, we've achieved whatever the goals or objectives that teacher had for themselves?
Yeah, a couple of comments. Number one, it, the conversation with the, with the administrator is an important piece of this, and my comment was that teachers, teachers should really be driving those conversations, but it's a two-way conversation. The other thing is, in the end, you're evaluated against the performance expect, expectations of the rubrics. So you're, it's not like the, the expectations change from teacher to teacher. The goals may change, what they wanna focus on and spend more time on can change.
So...
But in the end, the evaluation is against the rubric for classroom teacher or reading specialist or...
So again, then going back to Derek's question, when he used the fourth, math teachers, he used math as, as a rubric, using the rubrics, because he didn't use that word, but, but that's, that's the word you used. If, if the math teachers have a set rubrics to, to follow, then wouldn't the goals or objectives be the same for all four, for all four teachers? If that's what the rubric says.
Well, the rubrics are generic. It's the teacher grows and develops professionally, but their goals could have nothing to do with that.
Me, I, I, and when I, when I read this, I gotta tell you, if I had to be evaluated that way when I worked, when, when I didn't own my own business, I had to work like that, I'd just throw my hands up and said, call me in, tell me what I good I did or how bad I did, and, you know, I'm moving on to the next year, hopefully. Because I, this is, I don't know how anybody, I don't know how anybody could grasp an eighty-six page document and make any sense out of whether or not they're meeting any goals or objectives or improving, and how an administrator could literally judge a person using that same criteria. Now, I understand that, you know, granted, I was on board in two thousand and ten, didn't know a whole lot back then, so I probably was in the process that voted yes for this.
But here's the other thing, those eighty-six pages cover multiple categories. It covers classroom teachers, it covers librarians, school psychologists, so there, for example, for classroom teacher, there's a total of, I think, twenty-two criteria across those four categories.
Well, it'll be very interesting as you begin to send to us where they'd broken down into as individual and specific process, even to the sense that if it's, math is one and science is another, and English is this, and music is this, and physical, because they all can have the same criteria of judgment.
You're not suggesting...
Or maybe, or maybe the state is requiring that.
But they, no, they do.
You're suggesting that they read all eighty-six pages and then try to figure out which parts of them apply to what they're teaching and then have a conversation with the administrator about that, is that what you mean?
No, because, and for example, classroom teachers are one category, the rubrics are all the same. And it may, there's some pieces that, that, so if you look at the, at the reports, you can receive a one, two, three, or a not applicable. So there are some criteria that will meet or not, but it is, it's the same rubric in the Danielson model and in virtually every model. If your, your category of, of job basically defines what that rubric is, because the facets of teaching are very common across both grade levels and subject areas. So we're looking, what are we looking for in planning and preparation? What are we looking for in terms of the classroom environment where instruction is happening? What are we looking for in terms of the actual instructional pieces? What are we looking at in terms of questioning strategies? And, and so, it is generic, I think there's some real strengths in it, but that makes it, it difficult because you also have to allow for differences in the, in the rubric language for grade levels, for subject areas. And, and, you know, the committees are spending very long amounts of time, you know, in discussion of in some cases, two or three words. And Mr. Cooper, we were, no, actually, you were unable to make it yesterday. We spent, yes, Ms. Leary was there, probably two hours, and made revisions to maybe ten to fifteen words in that conversation, and really looking at parsing this out. So what do, what would this look like in a, in a high school English class? What would this look like in a grade two class? And how do we, we do that? And that's one of the challenges, quite honestly.
So can I ask Derek's question in a different way? That they're all, well, they're all evaluated with this form to some degree. So as far as their, their personal goals, they're not evaluated on their personal goals, correct? That's almost what it, like, sounds like what you're saying, is they establish goals which hopefully will help them in their evaluation, but you don't sit down with them, I think that's what John's asking, you're not gonna sit down with them after six months and say, listen, this is what your three personal goals were, here's where you stand with your personal goals.
That, that's part of the process, but in the end, you're judged against the criteria?
Not the goals.
And the new model's gonna be four ratings, right? Not just three? Is that right?
I'm sorry?
The, the new model isn't gonna be one, two, or three, it's gonna be four, right? What, do you know what they are? Because right now, they're basically, what is it, satisfactory, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory, that like, these, sort of middle, distinction.
The state has, yeah, the state has, has recommended language, but we have, one of the groups, the group that's not met yet with the teachers is gonna be the LEA executive and some administrators, and one of the things we wanna talk about is what will the, the labels be of the four categories? So the state doesn't mandate the four, what the names of the four levels are, the state mandates the, that they, that there be four. So for example, is the second level emerging? Is it unsatisfactory? And there are advantages and disadvantages of, of each of those, and so we want some input from the people being evaluated on the advantage. So, for example, the classroom teacher rubric has, I think, ten people, all three building administrators, Dr. Hian, myself, and then six teachers, so let's say eleven.
As you've, as you've, as you, our school system's been going through this, I imagine all the school systems have been going through this?
Um, yes and no. I mean, we, we had a four-point rubric at one point in time, some people already had a four-point, and Danielson has pretty much always had a four. We had a four at one point and went to a three. I don't know if that happened in two thousand and ten or before, but the state mandates the four. The research shows that, that you don't get much differentiation with a three-point rubric. Our results would, annual results would, would show that as well, so...
So are we, are we working or been partnering with any districts that have already figured out this wheel?
Well, what we're, what we're...
Or we tried to blaze this trail around?
What we're starting with is the Danielson rubrics. The Danielson rubrics have been around for...
Well, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I mean, but there's another district that, that's had a four-point rubrics or four-point, you know, evaluation system in place, not that we're gonna undo a lot of the work that's been done, but I mean, would it not, I mean, you, you're meeting with superintendents on a monthly, a monthly basis, is this not a, a topic of conversation that occurs with superintendents?
Well, more districts use Danielson than everything else put together.
Okay.
So it is...
I'm not doubting Danielson.
It is, it is kind of the, the standard in terms of that. So, you know, and that's where we're starting, we're starting with Danielson and, and then basically massaging some language, about is this appropriate for distinguished, or we're using Danielson's language now as the four placeholders. So is this appropriate in distinguished? So, you know, is there, is an appropriate distinction between level three and level two? I would say the vast majority of the language, in some cases, the entire rubric in a section will remain the same and be unchanged, but we'll have some discussion about it. In other cases, there'll be some, some use of some modifiers to change a little bit of the, of the tone or the sense. And a lot of the question is about, you know, is this realistic? What would this look like, for example, in a grade two class? But in terms of the, the, the rubric itself, you know, Danielson is pretty much the standard. The Marshall criteria, Kim Marshall from, from Boston, is gaining more traction and more use. Right now, we have twenty-two rubrics that we use with classroom teacher. The Marshall model uses sixty. Now, they're very specific, but you would be, you would be observing, trying to observe sixty different criteria and evaluating teachers on sixty different criteria, so that, I mean, when we met with a, with...
I can't see how there could be sixty different criterias in a classroom on a daily basis.
The problem with sixty-two is...
Unless each, each child is thirty, you count them as a, a factor which is, to be its own...
The problem with sixty-two is you just go down and go, you don't actually look at his question, you judge it.
You just try to get done.
I lost internet, I lost internet. What are the four, I was trying to find the, what the four stages are for the new Danielson?
I'm sorry?
I'm trying to find what the four different rubrics are for the new Danielson, but I don't have internet for some reason, do you know what they are?
Danielson's four domains are, are the same and have been from the time that you started working at this, you know, like, two decades ago. Planning and preparation.
No, no, not domains, what are the four grade, this course, one to four, what do they stand for?
Um...
Do you have internet?
I do.
What do they stand for?
Yeah, so in the old one...
I think I have too much bandwidth again.
I am just to let anybody know.
That's one of the things that, that changes the most, quite honestly. If you look at the categories...
Not the categories, yes, so in the current one, three is proficient, two's needs improvement, one is unsatisfactory. What is the, are the same three, then there's a fourth one that's something else?
Distinction, usually.
Distinction, okay. I just wanna, it would be nice if there was something like that because, right now, I would hope every single one of our teachers gets all threes because I would hope all of our teachers are proficient.
We have a very high percentage of people who score three.
So that doesn't really allow you to distinguish between who are the really good teachers.
Right, doesn't differentiate from the next one, exactly. That's the main purpose of going through four steps, correct?
Yeah, what's the point of doing a review process if everyone's proficient? I mean, I would assume if they're not proficient, they don't work here anymore, but...
So when, when will you guys be done? By June twenty-third, fourth?
Some of the groups are, all we have to do is, is send stuff back for feedback and collate that and, and bring it forward. We'll have the board look at, at individual rubrics. Some of the work will probably not be finished till, you know, early September, the group, the naming of the, of the, the four areas, for example, I think is, is an important conversation. Unsatisfac, I mean, to me, the, the category that, that's most crucial is that second column. Is it emerging? Is it unsatisfactory? And I think, quite honestly, if it's a, if it's a negative connotation in column two, then it becomes more difficult for teachers to accept and more teachers, more difficult for administrators to have there. And so, I always like to look at column two as, as an emerging, or, you know, you're not quite where you need to be yet, as opposed to something with a more negative connotation. But that's, that's why we get, that's why we both have administrators and teachers on, on that, those committees, and to have that conversation. And, and quite honestly, some of the, the, the real benefit of this is those conversations when you have, you know, Dr. Hian, building administration, and teachers together to talk about, well, what do you see? So for example, when we looked at one of the, the classroom teacher criteria yesterday, it was basically, in order to be proficient, students had to, had to be able to explain to you what the lesson was about. So the question was asked, so I have twenty-four kids in my class, and the administrator comes and says, hey, you know, what's, what's the lesson about? So what happens if the student doesn't know? Does that mean that I get a, a one on that because one student didn't know? And so, it was a really good conversation. And so it was a really good conversation, well, so what happens in that case? And my comment was, well, when I've done that with teachers in the past, if, if, if a student says, I don't know, I would ask at least two other students. So you, so you're not just coming down to, to one data point on that. So those sorts of things, those sorts of conversations about, well, as an administrator, how do you look at that? How do you handle it when this happens? Is, is very important, because this, this is important to teachers and important for the schools.
So is this more of a review that's now gonna be done on an annual basis for each teacher, a couple times during the year? Somebody will be reviewing their classroom?
The process is done for continuing contract teachers. The model stipulates every three years. For non-continuing contract teachers, it's annual. And for non-continuing contract teachers, it, it pretty much stipulates a formal evaluation. But there's more flexibility for continuing contract teachers to do shorter but more frequent observations of, of time instead of a, a full block period.
Is that policy? Is it state law or is it in the contract?
It's in the document that you're looking at.
Okay, so it's policy?
Uh, no, the policy references that document.
Okay.
So the three years is because that's what's in our, our LEA agreement? Or is that because that's what's in an RSA?
The three year is, that's a good question. The three year is almost universal, I think because it's tied to the, the certification cycle. But our document references, references three, and it is fairly standard.
Any more questions? Bring us to the student handbooks.
The board read and evaluated and made some recommendations of some changes, but never took a formal vote on the handbooks. So the only task is to actually make a motion and vote on the handbooks as amended.
Make a motion to approve all three handbooks?
Second.
Did you guys notice in the-
John Patterson.
-front page of the union leader yesterday, I think it was, where dress code was the topic of discussion in a very lengthy article across discussion in few districts.
It's like that I've read a couple articles in the last few weeks.
Seems that other districts are having the same, same lovely challenges as ours, so.
I did have a conversation with Gordon about, you know, can we take the policies and, and send them out to parents? Currently, the, there's a package that goes home at the start of the year, and parents sign indicating that they've received and read the student handbook, which means they have officially signed off on receiving the policies that they can now be held accountable to. And if we went in future years, because I don't think we have the time at this point to doing that, we would just have to make sure that we, we still keep that notice to parents where they sign off on and say, yes, I have read and, because in, in the end, that's, the handbooks right now, as, as you know from prior conversation, are our means of verifying that parents at least say that they have read it and will be held accountable to those.
Further discussion on the handbooks? All those in favor of approving all three handbooks?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero. Some facility updates? Frank?
Quickly, Mr. Gia, thank you. Just to provide the committee with the update on an issue that is ongoing, I will have more detail for you at the next meeting, but the LMS underground storage oil tank, we have been working with a engineer in the state of New Hampshire, DES, to go through the approval process. We are required to have the line that runs from the underground storage tank to the building, double insulated with flow monitors should there be a release of oil, and there is, there needs to be a detecting device along that, that tubing, if you will. So we are working with the state to receive our, a approval of plans, which takes three to five weeks. That application is in with the state. And then we are in discussion with a contract. There are only five certified contractors in the state of New Hampshire to perform this type of work. One which we're dealing with is located in Manchester, the other four are around North Conway, Osipic, Belmont, and Meredith, I believe. So for some reason, they all seem to be up there, but we are attempting to receive quotes on this work. Once, once the plan is approved by the state, that will outline the specifications of the work that needs to be done. Part of the work is not only excavating out the old line and installing new line, but we have to test the soil as well to make sure over the years there's been no release of, of product. And if, if so, we would then have to remove the soil. So I'll have more of an update for you next week, next board meeting. Obviously, our intent, because this has to be done by December the seventeenth of this year, our intent is to have this done over the, completed over the summer months. The other update is actually not an update at this point. We did place it on thinking that we may have completed negotiations. We did put out RFPs, request for proposals for five different services, one being asphalt paving of the, of GMS. We actually are negotiating with two of the bidders on that particular project. So I will have hopefully a recommendation to the board that we will be accepting one of the bids and, and awarding a contract to them.
Actually, mine's a GMS blacktop. We ordered kid cushion about a month ago and it's still sitting on the blacktop, not underneath all the equipment.
I believe it's underneath now.
Is it underneath now?
I believe so.
It wasn't Saturday, it went, I was there for soccer.
I believe it's gone.
I think it's gone now, but it literally sat there for a month.
We'll look into it. Bring us to the school board calendar.
Same as the last agenda item we discussed and the calendar, and simply didn't take a vote to approve it.
So just to clarify a couple things on this, I like to do budget work scheduled on that. Did you meet with the budget committee? Have you guys met since this was discussed?
I don't believe so. That's what was discussed.
Well, I mean, are the, is it the, I noticed that the, the idea is that the budget committee will meet on the fifth, twelfth, and nineteenth of November.
Correct.
Is it the, is it the SAU and the school boards' desire at that meeting that just the school board rep, the superintendent and the business manager are gonna be at those three meetings? And that on the meetings of the third, tenth, and seventeenth, when the, when the budget committee is, is going to be voting on various budgets, that, well, we don't control how they're gonna do their meetings, but that's when we would make the people available, because our idea was we'd like the budget committee to actually spend time reviewing the budget without-
And getting the budget to them earlier, as is indicated on this, it's the twenty-first, so they'd have like two weeks before their first meeting. And as far as the budget committee's concerned, the, the specialists can be there for both meetings. They don't necessarily have to be. I think it's more important, I've had discussions with budget committee, Dr. Cochran, Frank, and I think the board also, I think having them on the voting evening is probably more important, because, because budget committee's already had a chance to dissect it, go through it, ask questions. And as you all know, John, they always have more questions the second time around. And I, I think with the department head there at that time, to be able to clarify any questions is really the time for them to be there. Now, whether the department head wants to be there both nights, that's totally their prerogative.
Really, the only two big budget items that, that get a lot of attention. I mean, the, the, the school budgets, other than salaries and stuff, the operational budgets are pretty much set, but you have IT, special services, and grounds and maintenance are probably the three that get the biggest focus or the biggest review, so.
And I think the fact that we started the budget process much earlier than we have in the past, I've already assured the budget committee that they're gonna receive a much cleaner budget to look over, and it's gonna be a lot less discussion with, I think, with the budget. I feel pretty confident about that, because we'll see them a little bit earlier also, so we'll have a little bit of, more of a chance of looking them over and making sure that they're clean. So we're not doing like we did last year, just sending it back, so they just cut X.
Should there still be plenty of discussion?
I, I'm sure there will be, but I think there'll be a lot less, or a lot less of repetitive conversations we've had.
You're optimistic.
Yeah, I am.
Are we, or do we want to have a discussion at our next meeting in which we give-
Some direction.
Yes, they use some guidance of where we would like to see the budget come in at, so that they have a, a general idea of what we would like to see?
And then you also have an idea of where they want the budget to be.
Fair enough, fair idea. You guys?
Yep, yep, absolutely.
I mean, that would give us a discussion on the twenty-fourth and then come back on our first meeting in July and sort of lock that, that process in, because I know you guys are doing a lot of work over the summer on that.
Yeah.
Is that enough time for you guys, Frank and, yes, Dr. Cochran, to, to?
Well, they need, I guess, will you guys need to speak with the principals and the staff to figure out what their priorities are? Because I don't know, it would be hard for you guys to come back with where you guys want the budget to be if you don't know.
One of the things that Mr. Burke and I were talking about were strategic planning. I mean, I've talked for a while about developing a district strategic plan that is a, a board document, but we've talked about the importance of having building administration at that plan. So we've talked about the notion of, of a possible afternoon retreat, an extended work session. And I, I really do think there is value at, at board meetings in having occasionally work sessions that is not a formal meeting. It allows for more open discussion and conversation. It, it is not a, a meeting per se, although it is a forum of, of the board, but it's literally a work session instead of a meeting, so there's no cameras, you can sit and, and have conversations and debate and agreement and disagreement and about a, a good range of, of subjects. That might be, be one of the things. And we both agree that having building administration at those meetings would be very important.
Let me sound. I think something like that would be important, because I don't know, I don't know if we can set budget directions, we know what division is in this treaty.
We'll have a general idea of where they wanna go.
We have our strategic plan Tuesday and Wednesday, July twenty-first and twenty-second. And last year we did much of that, you know, expectation setting, what is your, you know, highest priorities in terms of program, in terms of personnel needs. So that's when, for example, the GMS part-time math position was identified, that will be filled next year. That's when the CHS reading, half-time reading specialist that is in the process of being hired was identified as, as the highest priority. Now, if you recall, there were a whole lot other, of other positions below that that, that were priorities as well. But, you know, it was, it was brought back at the, at the board level to what we had already identified in, in July as the highest program priorities.
Did we vote on, give a vote on the calendar? I'll make a motion to just accept the calendar as presented.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero.
This is cool.
Six to one.
Us.
Top of the third. Do you have anything? Any questions on the manifest? Nope.
Not yet.
Public input?
I guess my consideration or my question is, is it my understanding that parents are now locked out of all school buildings after school hours?
Mm-hmm.
That's new this year. Okay. Is there any way that we can look at changing that in some way? I know that when my children were in elementary school and middle school, there were many times that we got home and got through work and we realized, ah, math homework's still at school, math books at school, and those buildings, because they are our buildings, we are the community that owns them, we were able to go into those buildings until like nine o'clock at night. And the janitors were always very respectful, and it was very helpful if a kid left a winter coat there, came home without homework. Over a weekend, on a Friday afternoon, you get home at five o'clock and you realize something's missing, whether it's a lunchbox, whatever, it's a quick five-minute ride to get that. I know there's janitors in the building. Our janitors have always been very supportive any time that I've come in, opened a classroom, let my child get what they need. And I would think it's just a way of communicating or contacting those janitors when they're in the building to let them know that there's a parent or community member that might need something in that building. And I know there's apps that do that on something as simple as an eye touch, that, some way that we can not lock the community out of these buildings at three o'clock, because hearing that for the first time, to me, that is very sad, that these buildings, if there's not something going on, are locked down. Anybody who wants to see the artwork that's on these walls when they do the Spring Arts Fest, I mean, sometimes it's just nice to walk through the building, because it's amazing artwork. And when you lock the community out of that, I think that's really sad. And I know part of it is, is the society we live in now, but I, I think there's gotta be a way to get around to that.
I just want, I wanna agree with Ms. Corbille. I think we have a, a solution kind of in search of a problem. I don't think we ever had a problem at our major schools. I don't know why we changed our policy. So we should at least have a conversation about it.
Well, it was a change driven by the school board, so.
Yeah, I went back and looked at that for a second, but.
Thank you. Sure we can revisit.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Might seem good to get the time, but once I got locked up, it wasn't a good idea.
If our agenda's light on the twenty-fourth, we can have the agenda on the twenty-fourth. Bring us to non-public. Session RSA ninety-one dash A seven colon three one one. Hey, to dispense of promotion or compensation of any public employee or to discipline of such an employee or the investigation of any changes against him unless the employee affected one has a right to the meeting and two, request that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted, be the hiring of any person as a public employee, see management discussing publicly likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the body of the agency, unless such person requests an open meeting.
Yes.
Yes, yes.